Four o'clock, we'll get started with the regular meeting for July 11th, 2017 of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission of Waterloo, Iowa. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the July 11th, 2017 agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's carried. Next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 6th, 2017 that was mailed out to you with your packets. If there are no changes or corrections, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Next item is the financial report for May of 2017. Noel, do you want to address that?
This is Anderson with staff. So this is the fiscal year-to-date at the end of May 31st, 2017. You can see the percentages in the budget minus year-to-date transactions on there where we're at 107% on rent and property leases, 91%, 70%, 111% on a couple of the revenue We are, we finished, or we're at the, at this point in the year with one month remaining, we were at 60% of total revenue and we were at about 66% of total expenses, so we're right about where we should be for the most part and finish up the year strong hopefully.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment? This, the financial report as presented in this font size or whatever, this is easier to read, so thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is carried. Oral presentations, this is the time of the meeting where those of you who wish, in the audience, who wish to make an oral presentation to the commission on an item that is not on the agenda for this evening, please come forward and do so. We'd like you to state your name and your address and the issue you would like to address and please keep your comments as brief as possible. Anyone would like to come forward? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to agenda items. First one, under hearings for site plan amendment is the request by Cardinal Construction for a site plan amendment to the R4 RP Planned Multiple Residence District and the BP Business Park District to designate lot uses within Country Club Business Center Edition located at the southeast corner of Ainsborough and West Sandmarnon Drive. Pages 14 through 21 in your packet. Do we have a staff report? Wait a minute, I gotta call the meeting to order first, I'm sorry. It's 4:04 PM. The hearing on the aforementioned request is scheduled at this time. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and site plan were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on June 27th, 2017." Do we have a motion to receive this and place it on file?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. For those who wish to, oh, wait a minute.
Now staff report.
We have a staff report now.
Yep. This is Miller with staff. The applicant is requesting the lot designations in the Country Club Business Center Edition, which is located southeast corner of Ainsborough Avenue and West Sandmarnon Drive. The request would not appear to have negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic movements in the area. The area is served by West Sandmarnon Drive and Ainsborough Avenue, which are both classified as minor arterials. Highway 20 is located along the south side of the subdivision and is classified as a principal arterial and there are two ingress egress points into the subdivision through Bankers Boulevard and Fisher Drive, which can help spread traffic through out and alleviate any traffic concerns at Ainsborough and Fisher Drive. Traffic Operations Department questioned if the applicant can provide a quick estimation of street peak hour traffic difference in any, or if any, if this is approved, to see if there is a cumulative impact on the intersection of Fisher Drive and Ainsborough Avenue. And the applicant responded with the use of lots as office or medical, it should not negatively impact the intersection of Fisher Drive and Ainsborough Avenue. And if the use of the one lot were to be residential, or residential restaurant, impacts could be more apparent and possibly a study would need to be conducted, however, that would not be known at this time until such if any development occurs. The current area in question was rezoned from A1 Agricultural District to R4 RP Planned Residence District, CP Planned Commercial District and BP Business Park District on February 25th, 2004. To the north, there are multiple, or multiple family residence and professional office development to the north of West Sandmarnon Drive, and that is zoned R3 RP Planned Residence District. To the south is existing professional office and commercial development, Zone CP and BP Business Park District. The east is existing professional office development and zoned R4 RP Planned Residence District. And to the west is existing professional office development, Zone C2 CZ, conditional zoning district. No portion of the area is located within the floodplain as indicated by FEMA maps. And the applicant is requesting to pre-designate the uses of four different lots in the Country Club Business Center Edition. One lot along West Sandmarnon Drive would be designated as office, medical and restaurant uses, and the other three lots in the middle, or easterly side of the business park would be designated as office and medical. The applicant wants to pre-designate the lots so then when development comes forth meeting the criteria of the designation, it can simply go through a minor site plan amendment for concurrence before city council. Therefore, staff is recommending that the request for site plan amendment in the R4 RP Planned Residence District and the BP Business Park District to designate one lot for office, medical, restaurant, and three lots as office and medical be approved for the following reasons. The request would appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, which is comprised of commercial and professional office development, and the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area, and the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon vehicular and pedestrian traffic in the area. Any questions for staff?
Yes, this is Do Not. My first question would be, has the traffic operations questions or concerns been addressed as outlined in the tech review notes?
They have, we did, as stated in the staff report, we did receive a response from the applicant indicating that, you know, the office and medical designations should not have a large impact on the area, traffic in the area, but if a res, or if a restaurant would come into the area, then they would have to reevaluate and see if a traffic study would need to be done in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
That was it. My other question was in another item, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, if anyone in the room would like to speak either for or against this item, please come forward, give us your name and address and keep your comments as brief as possible.
Yeah, I'm John Mixdorf, Cardinal Construction. On the lot, Sandmarnon Drive, Tower Park Drive, we'd like to remove the word restaurant from it and just make it office, medical, as is out at once.
Any other comments? Okay, if there's any discussion amongst commissioners? None, no. Need a motion to close the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining as a representative of the applicant for that.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any comments about the, or, otherwise, if there are no, no comments or questions, don't we need a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that.
And are you, we're approving-
We're approving, subject to Mr. Mixdorf's.
Yeah, without the, without the word restaurant.
Right.
Yes, you can amend the motion, thank you.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's approved. Thank you. Second hearing, request by, uh, here. What'd you do with my page? It's now 4:10 PM and the hearing is scheduled at this time for the request by AMS Energy Ventures, Inc. for a site plan amendment to the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a retail gas station with an above-ground tank located adjacent to 26 Crossroads Boulevard. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, drawings and site plan were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on June 27th, 2017." We have a motion to receive and place this on file.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is now open. Staff report.
Okay, yeah, this is Hyberger with the staff report. Request by AMS Energy Ventures, Inc. for site plan amendment in the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a retail gas station with an above-ground tank. The applicant is AMS Energy Ventures. A new retail gas station is proposed to be located 340 feet south of the former Sears Auto Center on the eastern side of the parking lot of Crossroads Mall at 2060 Crossroads Boulevard. The request may have a negative impact on the neighborhood and surrounding land uses, which are considered either commercial, shopping area businesses depending on the final design of the proposed structure. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding vehicular and pedestrian traffic conditions. The applicant will be getting access to the lot from Crossroads Boulevard. There are no recreational trails or sidewalks located in the area. There's work being done on development of pedestrian master plan, which will focus on sidewalk development in the crossroads area. The area is owned S1 District, and then to the northeast, south and west is Crossroads Boulevard and commercial development and all is owned S1 District. The area is comprised of commercial and shopping mall business development. The proposed location for the retail gas station is 340 foot south of the former Sears Auto Center and is on the far eastern side of the Crossroads Mall parking lot. The applicant will have medium strips placed on each side of the gas station with a total of six trees being planted on them to act as a buffer for neighboring properties. A drainage plan will not be required for this request. None of the area for the proposed retail gas station is located within the 100-year floodplain as indicated by the federal administration's flood insurance rate map. No schools or open space are located within the vicinity around the project site. There's an eight-inch sanitary sewer line located in the immediate vicinity of the site for drainage. There is a four-inch drain tile located on both sides of Crossroads Boulevard and a 36 storm sewer main located underneath Crossroads Boulevard. The retail gas station will be served by existing utilities within the near vicinity. There's also a 12-inch water main and water loop in the immediate vicinity of the former Sears Auto Center as well. The future land use map makes this area as commercial and the proposed retail gas station would be in conformance with the future land use map for the, this area. The applicant, once again, is proposing to construct 17-by-60 retail gas stations 340 feet south of the former Sears Auto Center and on the far eastern side of the Crossroads Mall parking lot. Will consist of four gas pumps, kiosk and an above-ground 10,000 gallon double-wall fuel system tank with emergency shut-off, emergency venting and more sin clock gauge with an alarm system. The retail gas station will have an attendant present at the site. The applicant at the June 6th, 2017, Planning and Zoning Meeting proposed constructing a retail gas station on the northeast corner of the Crossroads Parking Line. The Planning and Zoning Commissions at the times had concerns regarding the location of the site, lack of a buffer and the aesthetics of the retail gas station. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial for the site, planned with a four-to-three vote. Staff is concerned about the overall design and aesthetics of the, of the gas station and the ability to complement to bend with nearby commercial structures. There are also neighboring property owners that voiced opposition to the previous request and some of these neighboring property owners may still be opposed to the new site at Crossroads Mall. Nearby hotel owner, for instance, raised concerns about the noise from trucks and other vehicles that will be utilizing the gas station. This could potentially disturb hotel guests. The applicant is now proposing an alternate site within the Crossroads Parking Lot, which is 340 feet south of the former Sears Auto Center and the far eastern side of the Crossroads Parking Lot. The site is less prominent than the previous location and will have two medium strips with six trees to act as a buffer to the site. The Waterloo Fire Department has indicated they will, a permit will be required for the gas storage tank. The Waterloo Engineering Department had concerns regarding the proposed curb cuts that will be installed next to the retail gas station. For instance, the curb cut into Crossroads Boulevard will have to be monitored, watch for U-turns and traffic going the wrong way to the site, just, just to make sure that everything is safe. The S1 Shopping District is intended and designed to provide for the development of shopping centers. The S1 Shopping District is also intended to allow for greater flexibility and diversification of land uses and building locations than the conventional single-lot method. The S1 Shopping District allows for the permitted use in the C2 Commercial District. Retail gas station is considered to be a permitted use within the C2 Commercial District. The applicants are not proposing to subdivide the property and the structure, the property leased by the mall. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for site plan amendment in the S1 Shopping District be approved for the development of retail gas station for the following reasons. The request would appear to be compatible with surrounding area, which are retail businesses and commercial in nature. The request would be to be an appropriate fit for the area and be additional development for the city of Waterloo. The request would fill a need for the Crossroad Shopping Center and subject to the following condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, including but not limited to pedestrian interconnectivity, drainage, except as specifically altered by approval of the major site plan amendment, and that the exterior design of the facility is modified to make the facility more aesthetically pleasing and more compatible with the surrounding development. And that's Hyberger with the staff report.
Are there any questions for staff?
Yes, this is Do Not.
Yes.
I have a question about the, an above-ground tank. Do we have any concerns about, you know, explosions or anything that may go wrong with the above-ground tank? Or, another question I would have is, the neighbors surrounding the proposed location, are they still having issues that need to be still addressed? And also, when it was mentioned that the engineering department was having concerns about the curb cuts being closed off, has that been addressed?
Okay, um, let's see, I guess for, I guess you raised three points, I guess for the, in regards to the curb cuts, that, I guess that hasn't been addressed, but it did reveal this information to the applicant and they've said that they'd be flexible in regards to, you know, making sure that the design is safe and, you know, pedestrian and vehicular safe in nature. In regards to the new location, you know, basically, engineering department just, just want, you know, they, they were just concerned, but the applicant has indicated flexibility in, in terms of addressing, you know, the request from the engineering department. In regards to the new site, there have, we, we have not received any negative complaints about the new location and the proposed parking lot. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Do Not, what was your other question, you had a third question?
I had concerns about the above-ground tank and whether there would be concerns about explosions or anything that may go wrong with having an above-ground tank.
I, I think with the, the safety features, and I believe the applicant spoke to this last month, is that I, I don't believe that there, there will be any issues and also the fire department has to sign off on, on the tank anyway.
And they did?
They, they have not yet.
This is Anderson with staff. So Chris Ferguson was at the Technical Review Committee, who's a Waterloo Fire Marshal, and he did not indicate any concerns there. In previous discussions with him, as long as it's properly designed as they're saying it is, he did not have any concerns as long as it was designed within the fire code.
Okay, so it's a paperwork error, it's a timing error that they have not officially signed off on the-
They, they haven't seen the full plans yet.
Okay.
Those will come when the building process will come.
Okay, thank you.
So this is Butch, and I, I have some concerns about this. First of all, in part of this, in the very beginning, it talked about there being a need and the fact that regular gas stations are going by the wayside. We have two new gas stations that I'm aware of going in, in the Waterloo area. We've got Quick Star right across the street, we've got another one on La Porte Road. To me, to me, this doesn't look like it fits in with the strip malls and the, you know, the shopping atmosphere of Crossroads. To me, this would be more of a deterrent. I don't, I don't see a need, besides which I basically think it's ugly. I'm sorry. I, I just don't think it, six trees is, and I'm concerned, just like, like Eric is, with something above ground. And I don't know if you guys noticed, but the fuel tank is built in Beijing, just as a sideline. That's just me. But, um, I, I guess I don't see the point or the purpose, so somebody's gonna have to sell me on this.
I've got a question for staff. In the, in our notes here, it says the request may have a negative impact on the neighborhood and surrounding land uses. Can you just expand a little bit on how staff recommendation can say the request would appear to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood or surrounding area? Maybe you're just talking about zoning in that instance, but specifically, can you address how we move past the fact that this may have a negative impact on the neighborhood considering how much commerce goes on in that neighborhood?
This, this Schrader with staff, I'll try and address that. So, early in the staff report, we noted it may have a negative impact based on design concerns, and then we are recommending approval of it, but subject to the following conditions. So our assessment of not having a negative impact would be based on design changes, which is in this, the second criteria, that the exterior design of the facility is modified to make the facility more aesthetically pleasing and more compatible with surrounding development. We don't have a lot of details on that because we haven't gotten a lot of input from the applicant as to what exactly they could do to dress this thing up, to make it look a little less like a storage container and a little bit more like a building. But it was our thought process that if there is something that can be done to address that concern, that, that, that would then address the compatibility and therefore staff would recommend approval.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is Castle, I have a question in regards to, I know we don't plan review, but I am still concerned about not having a restroom for the person at the kiosk and that they'll have to walk across the parking lot. Is that a concern for the staff at all?
This is Schrader with staff. No, the building department has reviewed that and they have a requirement that if you don't have a facility, you can designate a facility. That designated facility has to be within so many feet. I don't know what that feet is, but their proposal to designate a facility was within that, so they're meeting the building code requirements.
So then I just have a comment on that, I guess. So, from what I read, it was gonna be Sears Auto Department where they would run to go to the bathroom. Well, what if Sears Auto Department closes down? Did I read that wrong?
It's already closed.
This is Schrader with staff. Yeah, it is already closed. The applicant addressed this last month too, and he can certainly address it this time.
Did he? Yeah, I wasn't here, I'm sorry.
Correct, correct, but, but they will have a key to the facility, even if the facility remains closed.
So the facility will still be standing if it's empty? What's the chances that it might get torn down?
I'm not aware of any proposal to tear it down. If they did tear it down, then the applicant would have to designate a different facility. I suppose that would be the main mall facility itself, probably.
Okay, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak either for or against this request? If you are, please come forward, give us your name and address and, and present your case.
Hi, this is Ethan Henderson from Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I am a representative of AMS Energy Ventures and you fuel the manufacture of the tanks. And I'd like to address a couple of your concerns that aren't really something that the staff can really address directly. So, in regards to the explosion proofing of the tank, it is a UL 2085 listed tank, which means that it is explosion, fire and penetrative proof. The testing procedures we went over last month are obviously still in place. They are fire-tested, ballistics-tested, impact-tested, all in the same test, all in succession, to ensure that worst possible, worst possible, worst-case scenarios are going to be able to stand these tanks. They're actually, the way that we've proposed this with the baller systems, the pumps and everything are actually safer at ours than what a traditional gas station would be, is a car could careen and take out a pump, and if they didn't have the proper hosing, much like what happened in Louisiana approximately a month ago, a gas station can go up in flames. Ours have solenoid valves that are built in to restrict the flow of fuel, so even on the off-chance that an impact could happen, that impact will not allow fuel to flow and that tank will not allow any fuel via punctured leak-out. You brought up a great, great point, ma'am, and I apologize for not knowing your name.
Marcia.
Marcia. Great point about where it's manufactured. However, just because the picture says it, we have a tank in Beijing, doesn't mean it's manufactured in Beijing. We have seven manufacturing plants all across the world. We've produced thousands of stations that are in service now across the world. We have manufacturing plants in Illinois, we have manufacturing plants in Pittsburgh, we have manufacturing plants in Singapore, Mongolia, China, to meet the needs, obviously. We don't wanna just have to ship from one point. So, yes, we do a lot of manufacturing domestically, that's why we create the jobs we do for those that we do, and it's important to me that we keep as much locally as we can. To your other point was the concern about the need for it there. The, the need for it there is not just because there are other gas stations present, that's a great point, that there are other gas stations available, there's a Quick Star approximately quarter mile down the road. Our gas station is not just a gas station in terms of a convenience store, this is more of an accessory structure to the mall. The agreement we have with the mall owner is that this gas station will offer incentives and discounts to the retail spaces that are inside the brick-and-mortar locations. There are 12 vacant lots, vacant openings in that mall right now, and Sears is going to be leaving. It's important that that gets filled for tax dollar concerns, but it's important for the community that those retail places, places become occupied again. And it is our goal that if we can offer these incentive deals with the mall, that we can encourage traffic to come back in. As traffic is encouraged to come back in, we can encourage more retail, brick-and-mortar stores to open up within. I walked through the mall today, I talked to as many people as I could that work there. Seems like during the week, it's pretty sparse, and it seems like on the weekends, it hasn't gotten a whole lot better over the last couple of years. I'm not saying that a gas station's going to fix that, but the agreement that we have with the owner of the property is that we're going to try and help in any way that we can do that I want to. I'm, I'm from Iowa originally, it's important to me that we can get something like this here, because I don't wanna see communities fall. That's exactly why we do this. We work with mall owners who are in struggling positions to ensure that they can occupy these brick-and-mortar spaces, so we don't waste square footage, so we don't waste tax dollars, so nobody has to lose money and nobody has to lose jobs.
Okay, well, the, the main reason that I brought up the Beijing thing was, the pictures that they gave me not only showed that at the very top, but it was like a, some kind of a foreign language in some of the other pictures that I saw too, so I-
Last time they brought up the concerns about the aesthetics, I just wanted to show a couple of the wrap options and then, of course, hit on the fact that, that we're open to alternative options. I think last time there was a recommendation to possibly use a fence around the exterior. I wouldn't wanna call it a fence, I'd rather build a facade wall of some sort that's of equal height to the station as opposed to putting a fence up. To me, a chain link fence would be even more of an eyesore, I would, I would think. I would much rather have- I would much rather have us agree on some type of terms of a facade wall. I'm absolutely 100% on board with working with the community to make this work for that area. If there's an aesthetic concern, we can address it, and we can totally work through it. I, as the applicant and the manufacturer of these systems, is more than happy to work with the community to make sure that this is going to work for you.
Okay, and then I just have one more question, since you're here. The quality of the fuel, because the part I read was that it was gonna be a lower cost to purchase, so where does the fuel come from?
Great question. So we're going to use regional distributors for our fuel, again, trying to support local. But whatever fuel type we use, this is initially going to be a 10,000-gallon singular fuel-source tank. But if reason changes, we'll come back, and we'd like to possibly propose, if need be, a divided 10,000-gallon tank, where maybe there's 5,000 premium, 5,000 unleaded plus. Whatever fuel source you put in there, it's gonna be the same. You can go to a traditional gas station and get, we're just going to, at first, have a singular, singular source of it. And then if we need to, we'll branch off and put, you know, a divided tank in there that also meets the UL-2085 listing, to make sure it's just as safe. And it's an easy switch-out if we need to do that.
Okay.
The discount in the fuel that you're referencing is because a traditional gas station costs between $2 to $2.5 million. Our installations are about a tenth of the price. I don't have the overhead initially, which allows me to offer a slightly discounted fuel price, which, again, is going to help bring a little bit of retail traffic back in, and just really start that ball rolling, where we can work with the retailers, we can work with the mall owner, and we can work with people coming in and out to try and promote more traffic.
Okay, thank you.
This is Hall. So I appreciate the fact that it did change locations from the previous month. I appreciate that you took that feedback and came back to this proposal. Can you speak a little bit to, one of the other really big issues last month was the aesthetics of the building? And so it seems like there's a bit more clarification of what you guys offer, but I don't know if it necessarily addresses the concerns that the commission presented last month. Can you just speak a little bit to what the process has been this past month to address those concerns about the aesthetics?
Absolutely. So actually, we just got one of our first systems in of this brand. The white tank, blue stripe that you'll see in the last page pictured is the brand that AMS is trying to have. So it'll be a white wall with a blue stripe. Whether that's on the tank or on a wall, that is officially going to be our brand. So as opposed to last time, where it was a drawing of it, this time, now you have an actual image of what the logo looks like and what the brand looks like and the paint scheme's going to look like. As opposed to that, building structures, we are not against whatsoever doing any types of modifications to the facade of this, the aesthetic concern. We've actually addressed in another community, possibly putting a structure around the outside, more of a fence, but again, a facade wall. The goal is not to put a roof over. If you put a roof over, it's technically an underground tank. And if it's an underground tank, it has to follow a lot of different EPA standards, which is what raises some of the expenses up really high. So we don't wanna necessarily put a roof on for venting and for that concern. So we'll do a wall of equal height and/or about a foot taller, so that way you don't get the visual of seeing what's on the inside of it, and we can dress it up however we need to. The reason that we like the tank and the reason we've gone with a tank in other locations is because we can wrap it with a vinyl wrap. So if we get somebody, Sears is going to leave 115,000-square-foot building. If I could get a retailer to come in and agree to come in, I could offer them, from a marketing perspective, a point of discounted fuel that they could, in turn, sell to their customers. And pending your approval, we could wrap that tank with whatever their decal is. It's just an incentive to bring another retailer into that. And that's 115,000 square feet that's leaving. I'm thinking there's about 85,000 other square feet that are empty there currently. So it's just trying to utilize what we've got. I'm not opposed to putting a wall around it. I just wanna make sure that if that's the route we go, that we do work with the building department on that, and the building inspectors make sure it's up to code and everything's okay with your guys' standards.
This is Gustafson. As Tavis had mentioned last time, you know, our biggest concern was the aesthetics of it. And I like the fact that you're using the trees that are already there to help buffer this. But what I would like to see is, I would like to see some potted shrubs or something that softened the building itself, so that it didn't look quite so rigid and...
That's a great point. Actually, just in you saying that, probably on the lateral sides of that kiosk would be a great place to put a large potted shrub. I don't know what necessarily would be, and I would prefer it to be in a pot, because it's gonna be poured concrete, and I don't think roots would take. But that'd be a great location. Other than that, I don't know if there's necessarily a good point where we could do some shrubbery, but that actually is a great idea for softening that look there.
Well, on the very back page of the handouts that you gave us, if you look at the middle rendering that you show there with the two pumping places on the ends, I just thought, you know, if you put like four pots with a bush in along that space in between, that that would make a nice-looking, much nicer-looking location.
A lower-height bush, possibly?
Uh-huh.
I have absolutely no issue with that whatsoever. The area between the bollards and the tank is approximately three feet. I think it's 32 or 34 inches technically, which offers plenty of room to put a pot in there and allow walking room still. So yeah, that's a terrific idea.
My main concern is just not only for the generalized look of the rest of the stores that are out at Crossroads, but I really do think that we need to be cognizant of the fact that there are people on the other side of Bop Street that, you know, have some high-end hotels and motels over there that, you know, have invested a lot of time and money into their facilities. And we wanna have a nice location for your gas station, so that it looks nice from their end.
Right.
As well as from the Crossroads.
I appreciate that. And I did actually make phone calls, because there was the concern, obviously, from the public last time, in particular, I believe it was the Home and Suites, Hampton, excuse me, expressed concerns. I went ahead and called all three of those hotels that are on the direct road line there and offered them the exact packet that you have, so that way they could look through it and offer me their feedback. And in particular, I directed it at Fairfield, because they're the ones directly across the street. And speaking to the Marriott about that, who owns Fairfield and the Suites, they have no issue with it. In fact, the blue stripe conforms with the blue building design that they have as well. So there's really no concern from them. I don't wanna speak on behalf of them, but I did wanna reach out to them, because it was a concern with the Hampton last time. And I wanna make sure that, again, we're doing everything we can to fit within the community. I don't wanna just put a tank in the middle of a parking lot and hope it does well. I want to do something here.
Yeah. I think all of us are basically saying, you know, we don't want to vote for this and have it come in and be built and then have a whole bunch of businesses coming and saying, you know, "Well, but you never gave us a chance to, you know, give our input or, you know, look at this eyesore now that we're stuck with."
Sure.
We wanna make sure that, you know, we have done everything that we can possibly do to have a nice facility.
I'm glad you guys do that, too. You guys do not have a position that I envy, quite honestly.
Excuse me, any other questions?
I just had a comment agreeing with what Carol said. This is Do Not. And I just wanted to agree with having the public have input and comments about the sale, so.
I have one question for you. You've said several times that Sears is leaving.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know something the rest of us don't?
Apparently, yeah, sorry.
Because that's not something that's been announced.
Sears Corp. has announced they're going bankrupt, yes.
But they haven't announced that they're closing the store. In fact, the last we were aware is that the retail store, Crossroads Center, will remain open, the auto center will not.
The goal was to keep it open for as long as it can. I actually had discussions with the CEO, Edward, and it's not looking very promising to any of the Sears stores. It's hard to pinpoint what is and isn't going to. It sounds like the Sears Home and Garden, the smaller resident, or the smaller city stores with about 20,000 square feet of shopping area are going to stay. The larger ones are really the ones that are struggling the most. Even, best-case scenario, they don't leave, there's still 12 empty stores in there right now.
I understand, but you know you're going out on live TV.
Yep.
And I'm just thinking, you know, it's not been announced yet, and...
I'm not wanting to make an announcement that it isn't.
Pardon me?
I'm not wanting to make an announcement that it is or isn't.
You did announce that.
But what I'm trying to say is that the discussions have been had with them, that they are going to be going bankrupt, and they are going to be closing the majority of their stores. And if they do close the majority of their stores, I wanna make sure that we're in a position that that place doesn't have to stay empty. Even if it's a Sears Auto and Tire Lube Center, even with that already being closed, even if I can only bring somebody into there, it's a space that's currently not being used, it's not generating any revenue.
Right.
Okay, what the chair just was saying, though, is that because this is a live broadcast on TV, you were the person that announced that Sears was closing.
Yeah.
Okay. I retract the formal saying that they are leaving. That's not my position.
That can have a real negative impact on them starting tonight.
Right. Yeah, let me retract that. That's not what at all I'm saying. I'm saying that their bankruptcy is leading towards larger retail centers closing. That is definitely one of the larger ones.
Okay. Any other questions?
I tend to agree with what Eric said, that I think this is something that more of the public should really have an input in before we make a decision. That's, I don't know if anybody else...
Well, it's what we have.
I know, I know.
Now, were the businesses that had been here last time, were they notified of the change of location and...
I think he just said he did contact them.
But I'm asking if staff from planning and zoning contacted them. I didn't hear that.
There was 17 property owners notified in the immediate area per the state code, which would include, I believe, the opposition that was here last time, yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that was done, then. So, you know, they've had the opportunity to come, and they chose not to, so...
Well, they may be here. We don't know.
Yeah, that could be.
Here it's not over. Any more questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jonathan Harshberger, 1425 Meadow Lane. I represent Crossroads Shopping Mall. Do you have questions for me?
So what do you think of this arrangement?
I think some of the things you're discussing are really invalid. It's not like a Quick Star. So if you looked at a Quick Star and you bulldozed or took out of your mind their convenience store, there are no shrubs, there are no trees, there's nothing by their pumps. It's just gas pumps. I know that it's hard to wrap your mind around that someday in the near future, you go to work and your car will drive itself somewhere, fill itself up with gas, and let you know where it parks, but we're not far from that. This is just a gas pump. Do you guys have Hy-Vee Fuel Saver cards? Anybody? Do you guys use Fuel Saver in any way, shape, or form at Hy-Vee? The proposal that they have with us at the mall is the reverse of that. You go to Hy-Vee, you buy goods, you save on gas. This would, you buy gas, you save on goods. I'm in retail. I'm not gonna lie. It's a hard job. We're in the retail apocalypse, is what they're calling it. The stores that I do have empty are bankruptcies, plain and simple. It's not stores that are just doing bad and so they leave our area. They leave altogether. Vanity no longer exists. PacSun no longer exists. Gymboree no longer exists. These are companies that are just failing. With that, this is an opportunity to help save at least the ones that are in my mall, give them incentive, and in turn, bring something back. Now, I know that there's high-end hotels by me, but there's also low-end hotels by me. And I would say the clientele that visits those low-end hotels are less of an attraction than just the simple tank and gas tanks. It's just kinda the way I see it. I have more problems with those people than I would that a truck or a car wants to fill up gas. And those hotels do use my parking lot. They use my parking lot without asking. Semis park there, moving trucks park there. Anybody that uses those hotels, park there. And I allow it, because that's what you do in the community. You take care of each other. I don't think this tank is going to deter from the community, but in return, I think it is going to help me and my retailers. But when you break it down, it is just gas pumps. It's not gonna look like a Quick Star. It's not gonna look like a Casey's. They're not trying to do that. And it's much safer. The research that I've done on it, it's not below ground. So when it's vacated, or they get tired of having a gas station there, they take it with them. Unlike a Quick Star that leaves these tanks underground, and God knows what's gonna happen in five years after they leave and they're unattended. So I don't know, I don't know what I can do to ask you guys to help this project, because I think it will be very, very good for the community, first one in Iowa. I'd hate for it to go down the street and go to Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, that gets everything that we're afraid to do in Waterloo.
Can you speak to, you talked about sort of the Fuel Saver and sort of that relationship. Explain, and expand a little bit more on what that program looks like. Will a consumer see that, or will a mall tenant see it for their employees?
Both.
Okay.
The way that I understood it is the mall tenants could see a discount. Customers will definitely see a discount. I know that sometimes you don't get a discount when you go into the buckle, but if the buckle decided to do something, I don't know if it prints out on your receipt, or if it's a card program, but then you would receive a coupon or a discount. For having used their gas, you will save on jeans or back-to-school items for your children. It would give an incentive that I don't have, or a leg up, that I currently don't have against anybody else in the community. I need a leg up.
Last month, we heard from, I forget who the applicant was, from the item above this tank, that was doing some development.
The Strip Center.
Oh, yeah.
That's gonna block my mall. Didn't know about, that I would've been here and brow-beating anybody that wants to put something in front of my mall.
Do you have, do you have any concern? So you're saying you have no concern about the aesthetics at all?
No.
Okay.
None at all. I've been in bigger communities. I lived in Minneapolis. I lived in Omaha. Things like this exist all over the place. We lose focus on, we want it to look pretty instead of focusing on what its intended purpose is. It's intended to be a safe fuel alternative. It's intended to be profitable for them, but profitable for everybody around them. They haven't said, "We wanna come in and make a million dollars, and we don't care what it does to you." They've addressed as much as they can to say, "We want it to make money for you as well. We want it to be valuable in the community." It's not gonna go anywhere. They're gonna go down the street. They'll go to Cedar Falls, they'll go to Cedar Rapids, they'll go to Iowa City. I'm just asking, I think it's gonna be good for the mall. It's good for the community. I just hate losing stuff to every other neighbor that we have. I hate losing big malls. I hate losing retailers. I hate that Waterloo hides from things sometimes, because they want a shrubbery in front of a gas tank. It's not about that. It's about doing something that's gonna help. That bush looks nice, but it's not gonna help anybody. And the last time I stayed in a hotel, if there was a gas station in the lot, it didn't bother me. There's a Taco Bell in front of the Motel 6. It doesn't bother anybody. People still stay there. I don't choose where I stay by what's around it, always.
You talked about, you know, helping the mall, which we certainly are not against. We certainly wanna see that succeed, just like the Cedar Falls, Far Out One, whatever that was, that never made it. But has this company provided any studies for you to show, you know, that a mall that maybe is struggling a little bit? a mall that maybe is struggling a little bit, that something like this has helped?
It's still in its infancy. There's not even a lot of pictures that they can give you. This is a brand-new concept and they can roll a wheel out and you've gotta understand that that wheel that they showed you has so many possibilities. You kind of have that faith that they're gonna work with you. From the meetings I've had with the owners, the concept designers, the people that want to bring it to the mall, and the representative, they're not gonna let it fail. Something they can't afford to let fail. And the only thing that I'm focused on is, what's it gonna do for me? He, he can put that anywhere, but I want it in my lot. I want it to help me. I guess I'm a little selfish in fighting for all my tenants, fighting for the community, but if it's going to help bring retail back into my mall, I'm all for it. I'll try anything. At this point, I can't watch another company go bankrupt and walk out of the mall. Ridiculous. It makes my job hard. Anything that will help me, I'm behind 100%.
Can I speak on the shrubbery thing real quick? I just, I like the idea of the business. I like what you're trying to do with the mall, but the, the reason that we were looking for the shrubbery and looking for what the landscape would look like is, a lot of these other areas, we have such big requirements for what they have to do. And the first proposal, it looked like it was just being plopped down in a lot. We wanted something that's gonna look permanent, that's gonna look like it's part of the landscape. And it's not just we're trying to hide it. We want it to look like it's part of the community and part of your building and not just set in a lot and moved on.
From what I understand from the drawings and what I had today, they will do whatever it needs to do to make it look like it belongs. Right now, it's just broken concrete and parking lot that the DOT tests on for motorcycle tests. It's not like I'm, I'm painting a mustache on the Mona Lisa. It's just parking lot. It's parking lot that you can see from all those hotels. And it's not an aesthetically party or pleasing part of the mall as is. Um, Bishop's is closed on that side and I've got the Sears Auto Center closed. Um, hopefully, we'll have something for Sears. I'm not gonna be the one to tell anybody Sears is closing, 'cause I have no information that Sears is closing. Nobody said anything.
I think the concern, at least that I had, two concerns that I had last month were the, um, premier, or somebody shoot a hole in the tank, I didn't want it to spring a leak and you'd address that.
As far as I know, they do ballistics testing with large weapons.
Right, yeah. He had, he had addressed that. Um, the other was just the location in the parking lot itself. Um, I, I think honestly, in my own opinion, the place you've proposed to put it now is more appropriate than, than last, where you had it last.
I would agree and disagree. I think if it's something that you're afraid that it's not gonna be pretty, that's a good spot for profitability. I think it should be closer to the movie theater and on the side with Pier 1. Get a lot of traffic from Flumay. It's, in all intents and purposes, if you didn't have the Hy-Vee gas station store itself and you just had pumps like a Sam's Club does, I think it would fit on that side of the mall better. But if you were gonna take a chance on something, I think that's the best spot to take a chance on. There's nothing to lose on that side.
Are, are any of your tenants opposed to it?
No, nobody is.
Okay.
Anything that would help a tenant, they're behind 100%. If it's a sale, if it's a sidewalk sale, if it's somebody blowing up balloon animals on a Saturday afternoon, they're, they're for it. They've gotta get traffic back in the mall.
Thank you.
I'm...
Go ahead.
Can we call the question? Seems like we...
We need, we need to see if there's anybody that wants to speak against in the room. And if not, then we need to have a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Okay, move, move to, and seconded, close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passes. Now, do we have a motion regarding this issue?
I'll make a motion to, uh, let the board approve the request for the site plan amendment and the S1 Shopping District be approved for those reasons. You want me to read them or we need to, or... I'll make the motion.
You can just say, "As presented in our packet."
Yeah, "As presented in our packet."
Okay, it's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. If there is no further discussion?
Just, I was gonna, just for the, for the good of, I guess, the group. Uh, obviously, I voted against this project last month. Uh, I am gonna vote for it for a couple of reasons. It's not any prettier, but it is in a better location. Uh, I, I do disagree that aesthetics do matter. Uh, we can look at Crossroads as a perfect example as to why aesthetics matter. Uh, people want to feel as if they're, they're in a welcoming spot and everything makes sense. And, uh, currently, what we've got in that whole district seems hodgepodge at times and it's, it's not the best face, um, for a part of town that sees a lot of visitors. So, aesthetics do matter. However, the plan to sort of have a rewards program, uh, even if it's a small incentive for a location to stay open or for, for a location to do a little bit better, um, I think it does show, it, it's a good sign that they're willing to be good community partners. They've, they've been willing so far to change locations, to look and, and, and take feedback on the aesthetics. So, I definitely voted against it last time. I don't love the idea this time, uh, but it's certainly in a better location. I appreciate, uh, the efforts so far and I'm planning on voting for it.
Okay. And this is Tyson. I'll make one comment. I agree, I tell you this, and again, safety is important too. And I know that all of us have our favorite places. We get gas in Waterloo and save money and, uh, but again, I think we need another option out there in that area. Uh, I, I hate driving on the side of the streets, you know, and on the road there that's dangerous. And if the, and if the savings are there, I know my wife will be out there getting it. Okay? I know she will. I'll be paying for it, but, so...
Okay. Any other comments or...
I just wanted to make sure that on that motion, we are including the, the following conditions that the, um...
Yes.
...count, the staff added.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I had a question for clarification.
Okay.
Um, the concerns that were brought up by the, okay, I'm sorry. The request may have a negative impact on the neighborhood surrounding land uses and surrounding land, land uses that are considered either commercial or shopping mall area businesses. Those had been addressed as presented in the staff report from earlier in this item, correct? Okay. So, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. There's no further discussion? Or if there is? Um, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Chair votes aye. I want opposed.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to plats. Request by the City of Waterloo for the preliminary and final plat of Brock Second Edition, a one-lot industrial subdivision located directly west of 2010 West Ridgeway Avenue. Do we have a staff report?
This is Miller with staff. Uh, you may have recognized this area from a previous request that we actually heard last month on, uh, site plan amendment for blending stations, so I'll kind of keep this brief. Uh, the applicant is requesting a one commercial lot along, or the plating of a commercial lot along West Ridgeway Avenue, just west of the intersection of Martin Road to allow for the construction of a fuel blending station. Um, a site plan amendment was approved, um, last month for the site for a blending station for a Quick Star. Um, the submitted plat shows of one new lot being platted west of 2010 West Ridgeway Avenue, uh, being 4.59 acres in size. And the preliminary plat shows existing contours, however proposed, are not being shown and the surveyor has been made aware of this, that needs to be shown. Um, a 100-foot building setback line is shown on the property in question, which is a minimum setback for the M2P planned industrial district. A 15-foot, 15-foot drainage and utility easement is also shown along the front edge of the lot, uh, to allow for the extension of utilities and to serve the proposed blending site. Um, I will note, the staff report does indicate that there are a number of items missing, such as the one I just had mentioned, um, indicating, um, the proposed contours are not shown. And then there is, um, some wording in here that no legal description is shown. Um, the certificate of survey was missing and needed to be submitted to staff. I will note that today, we did receive, um, all of the updates that we needed. I know engineering was reviewing the plat just to verify that it didn't meet, um, exactly what they were. Um, the few minor changes that they were noting needed to be addressed. Um, but as of now, the legal description is there. The certificate of survey, we do have in our hands at this point. Um, so therefore, staff is recommending that the request for the preliminary and final plat of Brock Second Edition be approved for the following reasons, and that the request does not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian and traffic conditions within the surrounding area with proper traffic control measures in place. Uh, the request is in conformance of the future land use map, a comprehensive plan of the area which designates it as industrial, and the request appears to meet the intent of the subdivision ordinance. And then the conditions, we will just X those out because they have been met.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
So, you just, uh, this is do not, you just, um, reiterated in your staff report that a grading and filling plan is still needed, but you got that. Um, and the applicant is proposing, okay. Um, and a drainage plan, um, you've got the drainage plan proposal. So, you've basically got everything that you feel that you need at this time?
Yeah, the drainage plan actually comes with the building permitting process, so that's something that we'll look at at that time.
Okay. Okay, I think all my questions were answered.
I just, I just have one comment, and it's, it's mainly, um, traffic conditions. Where you're talking about under staff recommendation, number two, the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian and traffic conditions within the surrounding area with proper traffic control measures in place. The reason I'm asking that is, um, my church just recently moved to, we, we turn off of Ridgeway onto Titan and go back beyond, there's a, there's another business there and then, I can't remember what it's called, but then we're on beyond that. Um, and my main concern is, when you get up to having 20 trucks a day eventually on that property or going through that property, what are you talking about with proper traffic control? We have 450 to 500 people that come there on Sunday. Is Sunday one of those days that there will be that kind of traffic?
Um, I'm not quite sure I believe so, but I know the applicant is here, so he would probably be able to address it. I think they kind of...
I think, if I'm not wrong, that last time when he was here, he talked about maybe 20 trucks per day, but not all at once.
Yes. Well, no. I, you know, I know. I understand. I just wondered if it was gonna be a Sunday issue and how they were gonna take care of that.
Yeah, the applicant is here. Please come forward. I'm sorry.
Wade Dumon with Quick Trip out of La Crosse, Wisconsin. And, uh, yeah, so the, the 20 trucks would not be right away either. Uh, right now, we're proposing four of the tanks versus the eight total. And so, for the, the first five, 10 years until we decide to put in the additional tanks, there'll be maybe 10 trucks a day. And so, it'll be, on average, one truck every two hours. So, they're really not gonna, and that's all hours of the day. So, it gets spread out. Um, the weekend, yes, they do continue to work during the weekend as well. Depends on when, uh, the stations themselves need to be, have, have product delivered.
Okay. I just, I didn't know if you'd, I mean, that's kind of close to where another light would be, but I didn't know if it would be that kind of traffic that we would have to worry about.
It's gonna be pretty minimal. You won't have a bunch of trucks right at the same time your church is coming and going.
Okay. That's my, that was my main concern. Thank you.
No lines of tanker trucks.
Well...
I had a question and the applicant walked away.
Oh, I guess one of the other commissioners has a member, or a question for you, sir.
Yes. Um, has, have safety, have safety concerns with a blending station been addressed so that it would be safe to operate the blending station or use the blending station?
Uh, yes, sir. We're meeting all state and federal standards, um, and we're actually working with the fire department. Uh, there's some emails going back and forth with fire marshal.
Okay.
To make sure everything's okay.
With the last item, we had concerns about, well, some of us had concerns about, um, inadvertent explosions or inadvertent, because we're dealing with gasoline, so you never know what might happen. So, I was just wanting to see if, um, safety concerns were being addressed.
Yeah, both, uh, the biodiesel, that'll be stored on the site, as well as the ethanol, have a lower, they call it flashpoint, lower burning temperature than gasoline, so it's, it'll be actually safer than a typical gas station.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant while he's here?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Okay?
I'd make the, I'd make the, uh, the motion to follow staff recommendation, uh, to approve the preliminary and final plat of Brock Second Edition. Yep. Uh, for the reasons as stated below.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the preliminary and final plat. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oops, sorry.
We wanted to know the conditions.
Yep, 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 sorry.
He did.
Well, they removed the conditions.
Well, the conditions are...
At the very end.
The reasons as stated in the staff report. Okay. Now, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. That is passed. Um, excuse me. Come to the, now the request by the Waterloo Police Department for a special permit to construct a 70 by 112 square foot, 7,840 square foot storage building and another future storage building of the same size within an A1 agricultural district located at 1925 Newell Street. Pages 53 through 61 of your packet. Do we have staff report?
This is Western with staff. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area as the surrounding uses are primarily farmland. The proposed request would not appear to have a negative impact upon vehicular traffic in the area. Uh, access to the site would be from Newell Street, which is classified as a collector street. Uh, the area to the north, east, and west has been primarily farmland for many years. There have been little, if any changes with, with the exception of the area to the south, uh, it has primarily been residential since approximately 1901. Uh, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on drainage in the area as they will need to submit a stormwater plan and a water retention, uh, study. Uh, the future land use map designates this area as low-density residential. The special permit request would be in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area. The site is located within the primary growth area. The City of Waterloo, Waterloo is requesting to build two 70 by 112 metal pole buildings to store equipment. The front façades will be, will have a brick veneer along the lower half of the buildings to soften the appearance of the metal siding for the residences to the south. The buildings will be located directly east of the Waterloo Fire Department's hazmat training facility. At this time, only one of the buildings will be built, with the second being constructed at a later date, not yet determined. However, dirt work to level the site for both buildings will be completed at the same time. Therefore, staff would recommend approval of the request for a special permit to allow for the construction of two 70 by 112 metal pole buildings for the following reasons. The request would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian or vehicular traffics, traffic conditions in the area, and with the following condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including, but not limited to, parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, except as approved by the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, are there any questions for staff? Running off easy, Chris.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. If, uh, if there are no questions for staff, then if the applicant or someone representing All right, if there are no questions for staff, then if the applicant or someone representing the applicant wants to come forward and speak. If there's anyone else in the room who would like to speak either for or against this item, please come forward and give us your name and address and your concerns.
I'd make the motion to approve the request for a special permit to allow for the construction of two seventy by one hundred and twelve foot metal pole buildings for the reasons as stated and the conditions as stated.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, moving on. The request by Yoder Construction of Northeast Iowa LLC for a special permit to construct a ninety by one hundred and twenty foot or ten thousand eight hundred square foot mini storage building within a C2 commercial district located at eleven oh six Hartman Avenue. Staff report.
This is Dornoff with staff. The property in question is Zone C2 Commercial District, has been zoned as such since the adoption of zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding land uses and their zoning is as follows. To the north, parking lot, Zone C2. To the south, single-family residences. To the east, commercial businesses. And to the west, single-family residence, all zones, C2 Commercial District. Their request could have a negative impact on the surrounding areas. The site has residences to the south and east of the site. The area consists of commercial businesses to the northeast and northwest, built between nineteen forty-four and nineteen forty-eight. And of single-family residences to the south and east, built between nineteen thirty-four and nineteen sixty-two, with most being built between nineteen thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Such a building would typically be required to be buffered, including fencing and landscaping to screen it from residences. Ever given the proposed layout with garage doors facing Hartman and the white driveway running a majority of the property line along Hartman, it would be difficult to screen the site. The applicant has indicated they do not want to alter the layout of the proposed building. Previously, the applicant had submitted a drainage plan, but an updated drainage plan with their current plans would need to be approved by engineering before a permit could be issued. The future land use map indicates this area is mixed-use, commercial, medium to high-density residential, professional offices and battle with commercial. The special permit request would be in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for the area. The applicant is proposing to build a ten thousand eight hundred square foot building at the corner of Hartman Street and Wilbur. The building will have six overhead doors on both sides of the building, totaling twelve twenty-foot by forty-five-foot units for rent. The new building will replace an existing sixteen hundred and eighty square foot building that was constructed in nineteen fifty-five. While the building is built, being built in a C2 commercial district, there was concerns about the fact that there are homes on both the south and west of the property. The site is located in an area that has been struggling economically for the last few years, so new investment is being encouraged to revitalize the area. The planning department did ask about possibly turning the building so it would face Wilbur and not have the driveway along the entire lane for Hartman. They did agree to move the building five feet back, which in order to allow no vehicles be parked on Hartman Avenue right away. It was noted to the applicant at a meeting on June twenty-sixth that any changes to the type of storage. They're currently looking at RV storage, stuff like that. But changing it to furniture and stuff would require the installation of a sprinkler system. And the fire department did reiterate that fact during tech review. Also, Water Works noted that there is a service line to the existing building and that it will need to be severed before the building can be demolished. Therefore, staff recommends that the request, the special permit to allow construction of a ten thousand eight hundred square foot mini storage building be approved for the following reasons. The request is in an area Zone C2 Commercial District. It would replace a less desirable building with a new one and possible higher tax assessment. It is bringing new investment to the area that needs economic stimulus with the following conditions. That the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, et cetera, except as approved by the Board of Adjustments.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Yes, this is Do Not. My question, the, the staff report says the request could have a negative impact upon the surrounding area as the site has residences to the south and east of the site. So what are the negative impacts?
Well, you do have residences across the street. I mean, it's one of those, the residents have been there for a long time, but it's also in a commercial area. It's always been zoned commercial since institution, so it's kind of like, and the area definitely needs the investment. So it's kind of like, you know, having storage across the street is not the most preferable, but on the other hand, it is in a commercial area. So it's kind of a balancing act.
Okay, and have we had any complaints from the neighborhood or the neighbors that would be living in that area?
No.
And the other thing that made me uncomfortable was, there was a point in here on page sixty-three or at the top of sixty-three where, the page in the packet. Where it talks about how they didn't want to cooperate with the city proposal about how to build their building and in what direction they should put their building.
Well, we, you know, just said, you know, is it possible to do this? But then they would have to completely change the building, make it smaller, right? Chris, you want to, I couldn't be at the meeting because I was out of town, so Chris, what's that that mean?
It wasn't a matter of them not cooperating. It was a matter of being that there's doors on both sides of the building. If you turned the building, it was going to make access to the one side more difficult.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, can staff explain why it would be so impossible for fencing and landscaping to screen this?
Let's see, I believe from that meeting, the building is taking up a very, very large portion of the site. And there's water retention, and I don't know if maybe Dennis, oh, Dennis is gone, he could maybe explain it better. But I think it was going to affect the water retention, because the water retention plan actually includes like the entire area.
So is the water retention on Hartman, is that where it would be placed?
It's actually on three different, like two or three different lots. So if you look directly, if you're looking at page seventy-two. So the proposed building is immediately to the east, there's a type of water retention where there's like several feet of gravel and then like permeable pavers on top as a way to catch water coming from the northwest. And the lot there to the northwest is also part of the water retention plan. And then along Hartman, there again is like several feet of gravel and then pavers along the frontage to catch water from the site as well.
But across Wilbur is the residential?
Yes.
No.
Hartman is residential.
Community Motors Body Shop is across Wilbur.
Okay.
Are they, this is Oldham, by the way, are they going to have an access off of Wilbur for the backside of the building?
No, it'll just be off of Hartman.
Just off Hartman, and they have to drive around?
Correct.
Keep the one off Wilbur?
No, I thought Dennis suggested. Yeah, I guess they are planning Wilbur as well.
Kind of looks like Wilbur.
I guess it really.
I mean, it's existing, so.
Are there any further questions for staff? Any further discussion? Is the applicant here or someone representing the applicant that would like to come up and talk to us? Is there anyone here in the room that would like to make a statement either for or against this issue? We see no one. Discussion amongst commissioners or motion?
I'd like to move that we approve the request by Yoder Construction of Northeast Iowa LLC for a special permit to construct a ninety by one hundred and twenty mini storage building within the C2 Commercial District located at eleven oh six Hartman Avenue with the conditions stated by staff.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Chair votes in favor. David, you going to know?
Yeah.
Moving on to the request by Yoder Construction, I'm sorry, you just did that. The request by Murgich, and I apologize if I mispronounced that. Construction on behalf of Masjid Al-Nor Islamic Community Center for a special permit to construct a thirty-five by forty-two, fourteen hundred and seventy square foot mortuary building within a C2 Commercial District located at twenty-one ten Sager Avenue. Staff report.
Yeah, this is Hiberger with the staff report. Yeah, basically, this is a request for a special permit to allow for the establishment of an Islamic mortuary. The applicant is requesting a special permit in order to build a thirty-five by forty-two Islamic mortuary in the property, which is part of the Ajad Al-Nor Islamic Community Center. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood as the area is primarily commercial and residential nature, consisting of churches, businesses, condos, and single-family homes. The Islamic mortuary would be accessed from the Islamic Center parking lot, which has access from Sager Drive to the south. There are no sidewalks adjacent to this area. The Cedar Prairie Trail is located on the west side of Green Hill Road and is two hundred and seventy-five feet west of the project area. The property in question is Zone C2 Commercial District and has been zoned as such since nineteen sixty-nine. Properties to north are Zone C2 Commercial District, west, A1 Agricultural District, R4 Multiple Residence District, R3 Multiple Residence District, and C2 Commercial District. To the south are zoned R2, one and two single-family residence, and east are zoned R2, one and two family residence district. The residential area started to develop in nineteen sixties, and the adjacent commercial areas' development has occurred in the nineteen nineties onward with the construction of the Islamic Community Center in the late two thousands. Which, and, okay, the, in terms of buffers and screening, the Board of Adjustment can waive the requirement due to Sager being between the proposed use and residential homes. However, the submitted site plan does denote an additional seventeen trees being added to the lot to act as a buffer for neighboring properties. Basically, since the Sager Avenue is separating the R2 District to the south, they're not required to provide a buffer. And this part is, when originally put the staff report together, a drainage plan was not required when I spoke with Dennis Gents. But since it's already connected to another development, which is over five thousand square feet, it does. So I apologize, I updated that portion and later into the report, but they will need to update their drainage plan. The property is not located within a special flood hazard area as indicated by the Federal Insurance Administration's flood insurance rate map. Community number one nine zero one three C zero two eight two F dated July eighteenth, two thousand and eleven. Central Middle School is located just to the southwest along Katoska Drive. Merriman's Park is located just west of Central Middle School, which is a little bit further west from the project location. There is currently an inch sanitary sewer line along South Hackett Road. A sanitary sewer capacity analysis was performed in August of two thousand and seven for the Islamic Center, and it indicated there was adequate capacity available to serve the site. And the additional sewer capacity needed for the one thousand four hundred and seventy foot square foot Islamic mortuary is anticipated to be minimal. There's also an existing twenty-four inch storm sewer along Sager Avenue that serves the site. Water that serves the site is from a six-inch water lines in Dolores Drive and Saint Andrews Drive. The future land use map designates the site and land to the north as mixed residential, low, medium, high-density residential, professional offices, and neighborhood commercial. Land is designated as low-density residential to the south and east. Land to the west is designated as parks, open spaces, schools, airport, government facilities, and public area. The request would be, appear to be in conformance with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Also, the request would be in conformance with the policy to continue to support infill development of the community as an alternative to other types of urban expansion. For the staff analysis, zoning ordinance requires that a mortuary use obtain a special permit issued by the Board of Adjustment after recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is due in part to the ability to be developed in mini zoning district as well as impacts such as development can have on public infrastructure such as traffic, sewer, et cetera. On August seventh, two thousand and seven, the Board of Adjustment approved a special permit to allow for the development of a five thousand two hundred and fifty square foot Islamic Community Center with a one hundred and one stall parking lot. The proposed Islamic mortuary will be the second building added to the site. On March twenty-third, the Board of Adjustment also approved a two-year variance for the parking requirement, which has expired since. The variance was granted to allow for fifty-five parking stalls, thirty-five less than required for the Jabl Al-Nor Islamic Community Center. The Islamic Center currently has sixty spaces and is requesting a new five-year parking variance to allow for sixty stalls, thirty less than required as a part of the special print application for the Islamic mortuary. The, it also should however be noted that the Islamic Center only has approximately one hundred and twenty-five members, which would require only thirty-two spaces or one space for every four mosque attendees. However, the zoning ordinance requires ninety spaces due to the size of the two thousand five hundred and twelve square foot prayer area, which has an occupancy rating of three hundred and fifty-nine persons. The max attendance of the Islamic Community Center has only been around seventy to eighty persons. So approval of the five-year parking variance is not anticipated to cause a negative impact for the neighboring property owners. That parking variance will have to be granted by the Board of Adjustment, and what we're suggesting is a five-year temporary variance. You know, just in case attendance at the mosque does increase, that way, you know, it could be addressed at a future date. But currently, they're nowhere near their full occupancy. So I just want to note that in the staff report. The applicant has turned in a new site plan for the Islamic mortuary that shows a thirty-five by forty-two, one thousand four hundred and seventy square foot building that will be constructed eighteen feet northwest of the Islamic Community Center, one thousand two hundred and eighty point eight four feet from the east property line, one thousand six hundred and seventy-five feet from the north property line, and three hundred and twenty-one point eight nine feet from the west property line. The property will utilize the Islamic Center's parking lot to gain access to the site and meets all setback requirements. The Waterloo Engineering Department are requiring the drainage plan to be updated for the original site due to any changes that will occur to the addition of the Islamic Cemetery. I did speak with the engineer that put together the site plan. They essentially overbuilt the site, knowing that future buildings would be there. But since, since the original Islamic mortuary is over five thousand feet and they're adding to it, they just need the calculations essentially updated for the drainage plan. But it currently, you know, meets the drainage specifications to add basically another fourteen square foot facility and probably additional facilities as well, since it was overbuilt to begin with. The Islamic mortuary will contain two garages, parking spaces, storage room, mechanical room, bath, washroom, and freezer room. The Islamic mortuary would not have a visitor center, so the two garages will provide adequate parking for the Islamic mortuary. No additional parking stalls be required. The mortuary doesn't have any visitor center or nothing, it's just basically strictly a mortuary. There are currently no plans to subdivide the property at this time. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a special permit to allow for the construction of an Islamic mortuary to be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area, will be placed and used in conjunction with the previously approved Islamic Center. The request would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. It would be good infill development that would utilize existing utilities and services and subject to the following conditions. The site meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited to buffers, parking, drainage, landscaping, except as approved by variance. Approval of the five-year temporary variance to the Islamic Center's parking deficiency, which allows for sixty stalls, thirty less than ninety required per ordinance, which will have to be approved by the Board of Adjustment at a future date, and an updated drainage plan that includes drainage changes to the site with the addition of the Islamic mortuary.
Are there any questions for staff?
Yes, and this is Do Not. And I think I have a question out of my ignorance, okay? So this might be a stupid question, but is a mortuary, is a mortuary the same thing as a funeral home?
It's, I guess it's not like, well, like a traditional funeral home would, you know, would have a visitor center and, you know, other waiting areas. This mortuary would just be strictly, you know, for services of passed-on loved ones. Basically, the Islamic Center will be, you know, essentially where they will be, you know, holding, you know, funeral-type events. So, so basically, it's just kind of like an area to bring, bring in the bodies, prepare them for burial. And then basically, you know, as opposed to having services provided, a funeral. in a funeral home, it'll just be provided at the Islamic Center.
Okay. And then where would, just my, just for my general knowledge and clarification, if someone was going to be cremated, where would the cremation take place, or where would the cremation services take place?
Um, yeah, this-
Islamic law doesn't allow for cremation.
Okay.
Right.
So the residue or the smoke of a cremation, it wouldn't even apply here because of what you just said.
That's correct.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Please come forward. Okay, seeing no one.
Oh, Suad, did you want to come forward and answer any questions, or?
Hi.
Give us your name and then-
My name is Suad Murgich Construction, and I'm a member of the Islamic Center too, so, and I am very welcome to your question.
I just have one question. Are the materials that you're using for the exterior going to match the existing building?
Uh, pretty much. Front side, where there's a garage, will be matched with a building. Two side, the other side will be like, probably not match. It depends how much we collect money. If, if we collect enough money, then we will match whole building, but like, well, front side will be matched with the building, rest of them will be like, little change, because money issue, like budget. If we collect enough money, then probably we match whole building. That was planned first, first thing, but now we need to cut, change cylinder.
They'll still be attractive looking, though?
Yes, yes. Roof, front building will be matched.
Okay.
It says on here, vertical siding, is that vinyl siding, or is it the aluminum?
That's a vinyl siding.
Okay. I'd just like to say, I appreciate the fact that, that you guys included the trees along the line, even though you didn't have to. That was actually, I apologize, I tried to make it a point if I'm going to vote against staff recommendations to give a reason why. That was why. Because, because everybody has to play by the rules, and I appreciate the fact that you didn't have to, but you went above and beyond, and I think it's, it's going to be a great addition. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Seeing no one, discussion amongst commissioners or motion?
I move to approve a special permit to allow for the construction of an Islamic mortuary as the reasons listed and the conditions listed.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 I know, Marcia, I said flavor.
Sorry, I haven't eaten.
I apologize, it's getting late today.
All opposed, please say aye. Chair votes in favor, and that one is carried. Next item is a vacation request by Dwayne Ilers to vacate a portion of a platted public alley in Block 14 of Hayes Edition located adjacent to 2014 Blackhawk Street. We have staff report.
This is Western with staff. Staff feels that the area is not needed for the city purposes and will not appear to have a negative impact on the area in question. The vacation of a portion of the alley that is currently being utilized will continue to allow existing businesses to continue its operations in the city of Waterloo. The current city policy does not allow for the creation of dead-end segments right-of-way, but the alley in question is already a dead end, and the request will only shorten the length of the dead-end alley. The city of Waterloo ordinance requires that all property owners with property abutting in the area requested to be vacated be offered the opportunity to purchase their half of the alley. The applicant submitted a form signed by Ray Mount Toing stating that they did not wish to purchase their portion of the alley, and in 2013, R&amp;M Metals purchased the dead-end portion of the alley directly to the east. The request would extend that vacated portion of the alley away. Therefore, staff recommends the request by Dwayne Ilers to vacate approximately 33 by 106-feet-foot portion of platted public alley in Block 14 of Hayes Edition located adjacent to 2014 Blackhawk Street be approved for the following reasons. The request are not, the request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The request to vacate is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. The request would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The request to vacate will allow an existing business to continue its operation in an efficient manner in the city of Waterloo, and the existing dead alley would be shortened.
Any questions for staff?
Is this alley actually physically there?
Yes.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, if, if there are no other questions for staff, if the applicant or anyone representing the applicant is in the room, please come forward, and if there's anything extra you would like to tell us, we'd appreciate it.
It's just a dead-end alley. We've been using it for years anyway, and this way, we'll be able to fence it in, use it for parking, and some snowplow, and it'll put it back on the tax roll.
And you are Dwayne Ilers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Well, are there any questions for Mr. Ilers? Anyone else in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll entertain a motion if there's no further discussion?
This is Tyson, and I would like to make the motion that the board accept the request by Dwayne Ilers to vacate a 33 by 106 portion of platted public alley in Block 14 of Hayes Edition located adjacent to 214 Blackhawk Street be approved for the following reasons as listed.
I'll second that.
No. Marcia.
What?
Marcia can second.
Okay. There's no further discussion. Just for point of clarification, I believe I heard, I heard you say 214?
I'm sorry, yeah.
It should be 2014.
2014, yeah.
Okay. If there are no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Chair is in favor. It's carried. Now, moving on to the re-adoption of the City Limits Urban Revitalization Area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report on the CLURA?
This is Miller with staff. Some of you might recognize this from a few months back. We actually brought this before the commission for a recommendation to send to city council. You did recommend approval of extending the CLURA, which is the City Limits Urban Revitalization Area. It is a three-year tax abatement program offered to 1- and 2-unit homes in Waterloo. It was adopted in 2011. We actually sent that to city council. We had a work session with them, and some concerns were raised with that recommendation. The recommendation was for an indefinite extension of the CLURA. There was some concerns with it on having it not come back before city council for review. So what they recommended is actually gathering, or putting together, the Grow Committee again. The Grow Committee was something, a committee that was actually put together prior to 2011 that actually came up with the initial CLURA tax abatement program, for those of you that might not be too familiar with it. So what the committee is made up of is many developers, realtors, bankers, I may have missed a few, within the area, just to have their insight and their expertise brought in on the matter of how residential homes are looking in the city of Waterloo. And we actually had a number of discussions with them, many of lengthy discussions with them on how residential properties are, or the growth of residential properties within Waterloo since the adoption of the CLURA. There are many different topics that were included with these discussions, such as, you know, only having it owner-occupied, or even extending it to 3- or 4-unit dwellings. We did not, or I shouldn't say we, the Grow Committee did not feel that there was a need to expand it to the 3- or 4-units. There really wasn't necessarily reason to do so. They didn't see any, any reason behind doing that, extending it to 3- and 4-units, I guess. And then, also, the owner-occupied, that kind of got into some sticky topics with, you know, how do we keep track of that and whatnot, and really, what is the CLURA really trying to accomplish? And that is the growth of the residential foundation in the city of Waterloo. So they did ultimately come up with the recommendation of extending it for 5 years. We have extended it one time already, and that was for another 3 years. They thought the 5-year was a better extension. That was a little bit better for developers to be able to fill their developments that they're currently working on, or beginning to work on filling the lots. And then also, it also kind of keeps a little bit of an urgency with the program to keep the building happening or progress in Waterloo. So if you have any questions, you can please let me know. Otherwise, I know we do have two Grow Committee members here today. If you have any questions for them, or if they would like to make comments, they are more than welcome to come up also. So what we're-
Are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, is there, this is Hall, is there a program currently? This is, this is just new builds, correct?
Correct.
Is there currently a program for reinvesting in existing housing?
There is. It's at a certain area for Waterloo. It's primarily downtown-focused for redevelopment, but this is actually covered on the outside of, and that's called the KIRA.
Yep.
And this is actually covering all new units outside of the KIRA.
Okay. So then I'll probably have a question for one of the Grow Members, and it'll be, why not have that, that specification that's got to be owner-occupied? If what we're trying to do is improve housing stock, doesn't maybe expanding the KIRA help us to overall improve the housing stock, both of new stuff? But if you want to make an investment property, you reinvest back into reinvesting structure, so maybe you can speak to that?
Yep, Kevin Fittrell, Midwest Development, 2922 Auburn Street Drive, part of the Grow Committee. I would probably defer back to Noel. He's, his time with the committee is longer than mine. The initial, when we, when we looked at this, was the growth of Waterloo and new construction, and how do we get homeowners to stay in Waterloo and not go to Cedar Falls? Our development company developed in Cedar Falls since 2003. As conversations, we started with Mayor Clark about, he tried to get our company to look at Waterloo. When we started looking in '02, there was a significant difference in value between a new construction and what a builder could make in Waterloo versus Cedar Falls. You've seen for years that traction moving towards Cedar Falls. So the initial conversation was, how do we get new construction? How do we get developers? How do we have people to invest in the community of Waterloo? We started building, we saw there was a desire for new construction, and as we saw our traction growing, the CLURA, or the, the tax abatement was that value savers. That was that key to holding somebody in Waterloo and providing them a value there, being able to afford a home that, that they could have gone over to Cedar Falls and, and had a little bit better value in. So that was our traction on the new. That, when I first started with the committee, it was, it was about how do we get new construction? How do we increase the tax dollar by getting people to invest in Waterloo? Where we, the one, we did have a conversation in the, expanding to the, the higher-density units, those were moving at the time. When we first met, it was single-family, single-family. Duplexes did seem to fit our common in new developments, so it kind of fit the theme. Here, where we're looking at it, you can see with our development over in Audubon extending that, 150 lot development typically takes 5 to 7 years. We have another development now, not Midwest, but you have another development going on the north side along Highway 20 of Audubon. There's another developer that's going to need some time to get that in, get it moving. So our only question or, or desire in this conversation was to change and give developers a chance to see that they can invest the money and have the timeframe to try to get through a majority, if not all, of their development before that tax abatement started to sunset. But it still gives the council the ability to say, hey, timeout, things are moving, do we really need to keep on going with this? Or pose that question to the group. To answer yours further, I would say, that's something, our next topic of conversation in our group is, how do we now spur other areas of the market? What do we bring in? What, what are other communities doing that we're not yet, that can try to increase that? So that may be a conversation that we, that we expand in the, in the committee with. Okay? Any questions?
Yep.
Maybe another, another question for staff. Currently in the CLURA is 3 years, correct?
Correct.
Is it, is there any gradual increase, or folks seeing abatement, 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 full tax bill? And if that's the case, do we see an increased, are we seeing an increased level of foreclosures of folks maybe being biting off a little more than they can chew, and then realizing after 3 years, now I've got, now I've got an issue?
We're not aware of that, but I thought John or Kevin may be able to answer that better, too.
Good afternoon. John, roof, 103 Ivanhoe. I represent Blackhawk Contracting and Development. You raised an interesting point, because a lot of people thought, if a person were given no taxes for 3 years, and then all of a sudden, they got used and comfortable to it, and then the taxes set in. We've built 118 homes in the last 9 years, and they haven't been in the green areas. They've been throughout the east side of Waterloo, 20 and Cedar Falls, all over the Cedar Valley, and in many areas that are sitting empty right now, not being able to be used for this type of housing. And I can tell you this, every home that we've built, primarily, they still have the same people, and they're maintaining them, and there is no foreclosures. I think we wanted to keep this focused on residential, single, and 2-family, because if you start to spread it too thin, then there may be some abuse that can be taken. We talked a long time about it. Kevin and I have been on this committee since it started 5, 6 years ago, or whenever it was, more than that. But I think the point to be made here is that it's working, and we need housing in Waterloo. We, there are, unless these guys, the big guys, were out there opening big chunks of ground up, there wouldn't be any lots in Waterloo, and we're going through them rather quickly. And it takes a while to get them developed. So it's, it's, it's helping us. I'm sure it's something that people look at and say, oh, you're getting something free, but really, you're, you're getting a home. And the people I deal with, that's the biggest dream in their life, is to be able to say, I own this. Where we may have trouble is in the apartments that are going up, the nicer rentals. It's taking away from the housing that we see around us, and those will decline, and then the city knows. What do we do? You have to tear them down, 657A, you have to get into those other programs, and you're doing something by offering someone who wants to build in one of these areas that, that I'm talking about, you can get in there and get $5,000 off your lot. I mean, everybody's trying to make it work for Waterloo, and that, that's pretty much all I can tell you. I'm passionate about it, but it's an important thing. I think you're on the right track.
Thanks, John.
I would just answer, but even at the higher price ranges we've not, if we've seen a person move, it's either been a transfer or-
Okay. Thank you. Ultimately, from my standpoint, it increases the tax base, which reduces the tax amount the rest of us pay. So I'm all, I'm all in favor of it.
And I'm encouraged to hear that the committee is looking at, how do we expand KIRA? How do we expand some reinvestment programs back into existing housing stock? Because we lead in 657A. So we've obviously got the properties that, at some point, we've got to be able to start to turn, turn that chair around a little bit, of existing stock, and how do we make sure that we stop them from getting the 657A? Sorry, I didn't mean to point you to Chris. You know, how do we, how do we keep them off that desk, and how do we get them back into, you know, better, maybe better neighborhoods?
Do we still have first-time home buyers?
Do we still have first-time home buyer assistance that's available?
Yes, we do. It's actually almost a one-day seminar coming up on that in August, we can send to you all if you want to be interested in that, too.
Well, I'm just looking at, you know, I think that it's great to have several pieces to the puzzle, you know, because I think, you know, any incentive and assistance that you can get. I know we kind of got ourselves in trouble in the 80s and 90s with loans being made to people that, you know, couldn't put any money down, and, and they didn't have any skin in the game, and so it was really easy just to, you know, tear the house apart and then walk away, because, you know, you didn't have any of your own money invested, but.
Okay. Are they looking for a motion or a resolution from us, or is this just a-
Yes, a motion to recommend approval.
Okay.
Then so move, I make the motion that we approve the CLURA presentation as presented in the packet.
Second, Tyson.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Chair votes in favor. Okay, that recommendation is passed. Next, we have discussion items, I don't know if you have any, but I should point out that this is Carol Gusserson's last meeting.
Oh, it is, okay. Well, I, I have one, real quick one. At council, the, they did remand the Hobby Farm ordinance back to us, so it'll be coming back in the next month. We've been advised not to talk about it much here, since it will be a forthcoming agenda item. I would recommend any of you that have any suggested changes on that, to go ahead and email them to staff, and I believe that goes to- Eric? None of them wanted to move, but, and Eric's not here, so we got it. But recommend those, any changes you have, some of it Eric's, we can kind of compile those for discussion purposes.
Can I just ask one thing, then? Being that everyone's maybe not going to be able to be here next time, and because I know last time you guys had a lot of contentious issues going on about this situation, I know that, listening to city council last night, I know there's a great need for this to be passed soon, because it's been in the works for so long, but I wonder if it wouldn't help to have maybe a short work session just on this particular topic before the meeting?
We can see if-
Would that, would that work?
Patty can call over you to see if there's a time and a special meeting, I think they call it, for the planning commission would work, the week before, something like that, I'll, I'll have her send out, contact you all, see if there's a time.
Okay.
I did contact Eric when the last work session was on Hobby Farms, and made recommendations that I strongly suggest that you take a strong look at Cedar Rapids Hobby Farm, because I really think that they're, they have a pretty significant program. I talked with people down there, they say it's working really well, so, you know, it, I'm, I'm all for not reinventing the wheel, and if somebody else has got something that's working for them, then, and they don't call it Hobby Farm, it's, it's called something else. In fact, when I brought it up to several different communities, they said Hobby Farm, and I said, yeah, that's what we're calling it up here, and they're like, no. But I can't remember what they call it down in Cedar Rapids, but it's not a Hobby Farm.
Do you have a copy of that ordinance?
I do at home, I don't have it with me.
You should get that to Eric.
We may have that one, I'm sure, so we'll check, yeah.
And I just wanted to make a comment. I know we were talking about this item and not having too much discussion about this item, because it's going to be a future upcoming item.
No, you guys are pushing it, aren't you? No.
But, but let's not have ex parte communication outside of the commission meeting, because-
Especially now with Tim Jamison sitting out there.
That's, that's improper, and, and as we've-
And I believe Eric sent a reminder email, so everyone's good.
Yeah, we, we should have all gotten that. This afternoon, I mean, you may not have seen it yet, but it came out this afternoon, so.
And I'll just apologize right up front, because obviously I don't know Robert's Rules of Order, but when I questioned and wanted the list of email people, and why I wanted to do it, I wasn't told that I couldn't, so it could have solved a whole lot of, so I'm sorry.
It isn't, you have no reason to be sorry for, for anything, you didn't know. And it isn't Robert's Rules of Order, it's the Iowa Open Meetings Law.
I'm just glad you all came today after he pointed out there was fines, so.
After what?
His email will talk about some fines in there, so.
Well, you know, I did write my checkbook, but it's not much in it, so.
Well, since this is my last meeting, I just want to let you know how I've been very honored to serve with you all, and I think we have a tremendous staff, I really enjoy heckling them and giving them a bad time when I'm able to. So, but thanks a lot, I really appreciate it. Like I so, told Patty today on the, on the phone, I said, you know, when you get to six years, you're just finally figuring it all out, you know, and then off you go. So, but, you know, keep up the good work, and I'll be watching you on television.
We'll expect cookies next month.
Okay.
Thanks, Carol, you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Come back and say hi.
I will.
With that, if there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
We have two motions, so I'm assuming-
Second.
He's going to second. All in favor?
Aye.